Let's call our council work session to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll please?
Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Welper.
Here. Any motion on the agenda please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda. Questions or discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Today we're here for a couple of ordinances. The amendment to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance regarding hobby farms and farm animals. Mr. Schrader, are you presenting that to us?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. The proposed amendment to the City of Waterloo zoning ordinance regulating hobby farms has been a couple of years in the making now. Just to kind of give a little bit of background, prior to 2011, most farm animals were not permitted within the City of Waterloo with limited exceptions. In 2011, that's when the City of Waterloo did a major overhaul to the zoning ordinance, pretty much creating a new zoning ordinance. And as part of that overhaul, hobby farms were added to the zoning ordinance, but were required to obtain a special permit approval, which requires recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval of the Board of Adjustment. But the ordinance didn't go into any, you know, real detail. There weren't any standards like minimum lot size, maximum density, anything like that. They were basically left to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. After significant research, there were a few requests for special permits for hobby farms that went through after the 2011 amendment and were approved. They were kind of on large acreages or on the extreme fringe of the city and no real controversy surrounded them. And then there were a few that generated a lot more discussion, and they ended up being tabled indefinitely. There's been two different requests for farm animals that were tabled indefinitely, and both the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment asked the planning staff to relook at the hobby farm ordinance and try and come up with something that provides standards. So that's what we did. We kind of tried to do a little bit of research as to how other communities regulate them, gather as much input as we could. And then after that, we kind of put together a draft and then took that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission had several different meetings at which they discussed it and made quite a few tweaks there as well. Lots of really good discussion at the Planning Commission level, including some input from the public, primarily in support of hobby farms was those that showed up. The Planning Commission was definitely kind of a little bit split on whether it should be more restrictive or less restrictive, and in the end unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance that's in front of you, that was kind of looked at as a little bit of a middle ground compromise, so to speak. So just kind of, I'll give some brief highlights of the ordinance and then I'll open it up to discussion. So within the zoning ordinance, in the definitions section, there's several different definitions of animals, livestock, hobby farm, all of which are being tweaked to line up with the regulations as proposed. And then moving forward into the various zoning districts, there's a few tweaks within the A1 agricultural district, but for the most part, farm animals in the A1 agricultural will remain pretty much unregulated. The farm animals in the A1 agricultural district would not be subject to the hobby farm provisions, would not be subject to the special permit requirements. That was a pretty significant point of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. The initial draft had farm animals in the agricultural zone, if it wasn't on a farm of 35 acres, to be regulated about the same as other residential areas. But based on the recommendation of the Commission, for the most part, farm animals would be unregulated in the A1 agricultural areas. And moving forward into, there's an RR, rural residence district, R1, one and two family residence district, and then the ordinance builds upon itself, so the R2 says any use permitted in the R1, so that kind of carries it forward. And then moving forward towards the back of the zoning ordinance, in Chapter 27, Special Provisions, Exceptions, and Modifications, a new subsection U would be created entitled Urban Animal Hobby Farm. So that's kind of the meat of the proposed ordinance, I would say. So it goes through and lists a minimum confined yard area that has to be provided for either large or intermediate-sized hobby farm animals, and minimum fenced or confined area for small-sized animals, and it kind of gives examples of what falls under small versus larger, intermediate, and also lists specific animals that are excluded from being permitted. Then it goes into shelter requirements, density requirements, more regulations governing the enclosures. There's regulations in there to address noise. No hobby farm shall be operated so that crowing, cackling, gobbling, bleating, or other animal or foul noises, et cetera, occur at levels that create a nuisance for adjacent properties. There's reference in there for the Board of Adjustment grant of variances to the requirements. Beekeeping is kind of addressed. It's essentially, it falls under a hobby farm, but it kind of has a little bit of different regulations. And then the last paragraph in there is what kicks it into the special permit requirement, but creates an exception. All hobby farms excluding beekeeping, which would not require the special permit, as long as you meet the requirements as stated in the ordinance. All other ones shall require approval of the special permit by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation of the Commission, except when the owner submits to the Planning Department a consent petition, which indicates approval, signed by 100% of the abutting property owners and signed by 60% of the property owners within 250 radial feet. And planning staff shall have the authority to determine if a petition meets these requirements. So that is the proposed ordinance, as unanimously recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll answer questions now. It is my understanding there kind of has been some question as to the proposed regulations and thought process for changes. The Planning Commission is just a recommending body. However, we did review this with the City Attorney's Office because the zoning ordinance does have a provision that the Planning Commission's recommendation for amendments to the zoning ordinance does have a weight to it, to overturn a recommendation of the Commission, takes a three-quarters vote or six of seven supermajority vote. So if any significant changes were to be proposed, we would likely, based on council input, have to send this back to the Planning Commission unless it would have a six of seven supermajority vote. So answer any questions.
Counsel, in all my years on counsel, I have never been approached about having a hobby farm in Ward 5. I think it's probably because it's heavily fenced with people. There isn't a lot of land where I can see the outside wards have a lot more land that could be turned into farms.
Eric?
Yes.
On a typical lot, like a bronze ward or just generally around Waterloo, the older sections, there's not enough room for a hobby farm, right? Is there?
Correct. For the proposed size requirements for small animals, chickens, that type of small animals, the proposed minimum fenced confined area is 20,000 square feet. So the ordinance also prohibits the hobby farm within the front yard. So, you know, once you exclude your front yard and the area where your house is sitting, you know, you'd have to have 20,000 square feet of basically side yard and rear yard. So there are a lot of lots within the City of Waterloo that would not even meet that minimum standard and not be eligible. They can request a variance to that requirement, but there was a good deal of discussion on that point as well, and that was kind of what was settled on.
Where is the, kind of the break-even point? I quickly calculated, I thought about a half-acre lot would be about what you would need to have a 20,000-square-foot fenced area.
Probably a little over, I mean realistically, a little over a half-acre lot before you're going to have 20,000 square feet of yard area that you could have fenced in devoted to a hobby farm.
And then when I'm trying to, is the setback only on the bigger animals? It's not on the chickens?
Correct. Let me verify that, but I believe that is correct.
It's K. Am I reading that right?
Yes, large and intermediate-sized animals, yes. That does not apply to the small animals.
Okay. And that's going to, even that's going to eat up a bunch of square footage on people's lot.
Yeah, so the, for the hobby farm proposing to have large, that minimum fenced area is 40,000 square feet. An acre is 43,560 square feet. So by the time you factor in a front yard in your house, realistically, you're going to need at least an acre and a half, which lines up fairly well with, if you're going to have a hobby farm, you probably should, you know, have somewhat of an acreage.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. So Eric, I guess my question is, was there an ordinance in place prior to this? Because like in my neighborhood, my wife has made comment before about hearing roosters crowing and those things. This actual ordinance now will probably prevent those individuals from having chickens as such in their yards, correct?
It may very well, but probably realistically, they're prevented from having so now and are in violation. It's, I mean, it's always a possibility that you're dealing with one that did properly get the special permit, but there were very few. I mean, a small handful of properties that between 2011 and now that got the special permit to establish a hobby farm. And in 2011, when the ordinance was passed, it required that all existing sites that had farm animals had to obtain the special permit within, I think it was one year, if I remember right.
So if an individual does have chickens in their yard right now, that special permit would be something that they would be able to pursue, or they wouldn't be able to, or...
Under the current ordinance, the special permit is in effect, so for them to have chickens right now, they would need a special permit, and they could apply for a special permit. The last two requests, it's been well over a year now, but the last two requests that submitted an application were tabled indefinitely. The first tabled indefinitely by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second one made it through the Planning Commission and was tabled indefinitely by the Board of Adjustment. So we've had, you know, since that time, you know, we've had individuals at the counter inquiring about chickens or other type of farm animals, and, you know, we've said, right now, the ordinance requires a special permit, but, you know, and they can submit an application if they want, but here's the problem, that we've had the last two tabled indefinitely, and we've been, as staff, charged with trying to rework the ordinance and have that apply to, you know, all operations moving forward. So most of them have just opted to wait and see what happens with this ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, Eric, several things. First of all, in looking through this, the, there's a definition way back there, 10-3-1, I think it is, and it talks about animals, household pets, and includes but is not limited to dogs, cats, rabbits, and then the new wording in there, when housed within a dwelling, and evidently that just applies to rabbits, but then birds, hamsters, and other similar animals. And my question is, why can't somebody consider a chicken a household pet? And, I mean, we've got birds in there and that, because many, and I am one of those people that, one of council people, that have got several contacts from different individuals within Ward 3 that have varying viewpoints on this. And, I mean, could that possibly happen, that you put more smaller animals in there that are considered, followed by some people? It's just a possibility that I was thinking of. But then, on going through this, on 10-6-3, let me get to it. It talks in there about horses and allowing 5,000 square foot per horse. And this is the stabling of them and that. And then when we get to small animals, it talks about 20,000 square feet for four chickens, and then each additional chicken, 5,000 square feet. And I don't know how many chickens make a horse, but I think it's quite a few. So I don't understand why there would be the same square footage asked for for a horse as a chicken. I have a problem with that 20,000 square feet, because if you just figure, you know, my house or how similar to that, I mean, it takes quite a bit of square footage to come up with enough room. I mean, 20,000 square feet is a pretty big lot, but yet we've got people in Waterloo who want to raise chickens. And not raise them like we're out on a farm and we've got a chicken coop or anything like that, but they just want, you know, four, five, half a dozen for whatever. And I think urban animal husbandry, isn't that one of the things that is gaining steam throughout the country? And so why would we purposely put a number in there, 20,000 square feet, that is going to defeat that purpose? Even given the fact that anybody who wants to get this is going to have to go through a process anyway, a special permit and/or getting people in the neighborhood to sign that. And then that goes into the next area, and that is that number eight, the very last thing we're talking about here. I can see the part about you're a budding property neighbors, or maybe even including the property owner directly across the street from you. But 250 feet in any direction sort of is like going two blocks, if you take the diameter of that. And I think that's a bit overkill. I mean, chickens aren't roosters, and chickens, if people in the neighborhood, your budding properties want to have them, I don't see that there should be any problem with granting that and not having to worry about somebody that's got 10 foot inside of the 250, you got to go to them. And what if it's a rental property? And you've got a landlord, and that landlord says, absolutely not, it will keep my renters out of there. So that's a problem I've got with that. The other thing is, I see that peacocks got taken out of this, and on the exclusion list, and I don't know why, and why couldn't they just be added to the large or intermediate animals rather than just kicking them out altogether? Because there's some people that do like to raise peacocks, and they do make a pretty sound when they squawk. I could do it right now, but I think people would really get upset with it. I've learned it, Eric.
I will.
Sorry to end on that note, but those are my several different questions.
I'll try and address as much of that as I can. I might forget some of that, so you can certainly...
The other one was something I mentioned to you already, and that was about butchering of them, and how I have a problem with that happening, and it, out in the open. I believe that it should be required that if somebody's going to butcher a chicken or a rabbit or whatever, you don't, you're not allowed to do it in your backyard while your neighbors are having a birthday party for their six-year-old, you know? I don't think that'd be too cool.
So I'll try and touch on as many of those as I can. Regarding butchering, I think it's actually a good question and a good suggestion that something addressing the prohibition or restriction for butchering might be a good idea to add in there. It's not something that was really thought of before you had brought it up. The peacocks were originally in there. I think yourself and Mr. Westfalt did a lot of the initial drafting of this proposed ordinance, which, you know, I tweaked quite a bit to come up with what went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then they tweaked it more. But in the original version that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, peacocks were still in there. The Planning Commission is the one that suggested that it be removed. They thought they're a pretty aggressive and loud bird that they thought maybe shouldn't be allowed. I don't know anything about peacocks, so I can't really address that. Going back into the, you know, minimum lot size and density requirements, I will concede that yes, as proposed, they are restrictive, and that was done intentionally. So the initial draft that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission had no special permit requirement at all. And that was intentional as well from the planning staff, because what we have now, based on the 2011 ordinance, is the use requires special permit approval, but has no real standards. So everything is essentially addressed on a case-by-case basis. Okay, in this case, having four chickens on your property doesn't appear that it's going to have a negative impact, sure. Okay, in this location, this is, we think is a bad location for chickens, no. So it's very, you know, open-ended, but at the same time, it's addressed on a case-by-case basis. But the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment hated it and asked us to readdress it. So in going from that to trying to come up with something that was very detailed and standard-specific, minimum lot size, maximum number of animals that you can have, setbacks, and all of these other details that we're trying to put in there, the concern is, if you have all of those details and still have it as a special permit, if I propose a hobby farm and I meet all of those standards, but I still have to apply for the special permit, on what grounds does the Board of Adjustment have to deny that? If one neighbor opposes, is that the grounds they have to say, well, nope, we're going to deny that? Well, opposed, why? Because they think it's going to have a negative effect? All of these regulations are being kind of overly restrictively written in a way that should prevent that. So if it's going to go back to a special permit, that is certainly something that could be addressed, but since we were initially trying to write it with no special permit at all, and as proposed, there's still that avenue of no special permit, if they have the petition, it was kind of intentionally written overly restrictive with that kind of backup, you know, option that they can, anyone can still go before the Board of Adjustment asking for a variance. Okay, I only have 10,000 square feet of fenced yard, but I'm only going to have four chickens, and all of my neighbors have signed off on it. Is it that big of a deal? So that was kind of our thought process there, but, you know, your reference to 5,000 square feet per horse versus 5,000 square feet per chicken, sure, that's, doesn't seem like a horse and a chicken match-up, but, you know, the only thing I would say is, that's not necessarily comparing apples to apples, because you're referencing to the section in the A1 agricultural, where horses are limited to essentially one per 5,000 square feet. Chickens are allowed, and there's absolutely no number. So on that exact same property that I might be limited to having four horses, I could have 200 chickens, in theory. So in that district, there's no regulations on the chickens. So this is really intended to cover more of those urban residential areas throughout the city, and that's where we're really getting a lot of input from both sides. We have really gotten a significant amount of input from those that, you know, urban sustainability, grow your own chickens, eggs, milk, you know, that kind of thing that has really been being pushed for and suggests that we be a little less restrictive as it comes to hobby farms. But we've also heard from the other side of, this is in the city limits, there shouldn't be farm animals in the city limits, or if there's going to be, it needs to be, you know, very well thought out in a process that protects the adjoining property owners. So we were struggling to try and balance those two. We kind of thought we had that. The Planning Commission didn't necessarily agree and tweaked it some further and came up with this, but, you know, we're still open to further inputs. If it is going to change significantly, we probably would need to send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but ultimately, this is, you know, the city's council's final decision, so...
Mr. Powers?
I've got one question on, let's say somebody, and I just want to throw out an example. Somebody has an autistic child, and as we know, we're learning about autism, that sometimes animals give comfort and calming to an autistic child. So let's say somebody goes, wants to have two or three chickens because that child needs some kind of calming effect. They go around to get the 250, or excuse me, the neighbors, budding neighbors, signed off on it. Then one neighbor sells their house, and they start complaining because they don't like the sounds of the chicken, and they've gone through all the permitting and all of that. What happens at that point? Does that become another fight or neighborhood argument between...
It certainly could become a neighborhood argument, but from the legal standpoint of, if this ordinance was adopted, as is any hobby farm that is approved either through the special permit process by the Board of Adjustment, or administratively, if it meets all of the requirements and gets the signatures, once that's issued, it would be permitted. So like, so if someone had met all the requirements to have four chickens, they have their four chickens, you know, they got the 100% of the abutting property owners and 60% of the property owners within 250 feet, then the Planning Department, you know, as currently proposed, if adopted as such, would issue them the permit for the hobby farm. And then, yeah, if down the road an ownership changed and they objected, there would be really no, nothing. It would be zoning compliant, and there would be nothing further that the city could do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just would like to see, Eric, just so you know, that 10-27-1-U2B, I would like to see that changed to allow for small animals as defined, up to 5,000, have to have at least 5,000 square feet rather than the 20,000. And also, I think that 10-27-1-U2H, I would like to see that raised to six, and one additional for each additional 2,500 square feet, but no more than 12. And that's just for small animal definition purposes, Eric. And then the elimination of, in 10-27-U-8, eliminate, signed by 60% of the property owners... owners within 250 feet to the, uh, UAHF, and add, uh, including those immediately across the street, or whatever legal language would apply there, if there is any property directly across the street. And the part about the butcher, butchering, Eric. That that would have to take place in an enclosed area.
Is that it, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Eric, if, um, the CDC recently issued a warning about salmonella in urban flocks, um, what if we, what if some disease went through the urban flocks? What would we do? Would we do, is there provision in this ordinance to shut them down for health reasons, or?
Uh, there is no provision in this proposed ordinance to shut them down. Um, I don't know that that's really something that you could or should do via zoning ordinance. Essentially, that same question came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, um, which was kind of the main reason that they were, the Planning Commission was pushing for either the special permit or some sort of licensing permitting process, kind of for tracking purposes, so we know where, um, these animals are, so that if there is some sort of, um, avian flu or whatever outbreak occurs. Um, so as proposed, there is essentially a permit, either the special permit through the Board of Adjustment, or if you've got all the, you know, signatures necessary, then essentially an administrative permit. So, we, we do have, you know, the tracking there, but, you know, how useful that's going to be in some sort of outbreak is questionable. And really, I think it would have to be, you know, probably the Health Department taking a lead on, you know, basically saying, "Okay, you've got to get rid of chickens because of this health epidemic," I, I would guess.
Do you have to have a DNR permit or license or anything to have, um, urban farm animals?
There's, there's no, uh, Health Department or, um, state permit that I'm aware of that a homeowner would be required to have for this type of an operation. The Health Department was, um, asked to see if they wanted to provide any input on the ordinance, and other than noting that they don't have any regulations that address it, they didn't really provide any input, so.
So, nobody inspects them for?
Nope.
Health, safety?
No.
Okay, we've got to start wrapping it up here. Is anyone last question that someone needs to ask?
Kind of a follow-up to Councilman Lenz. If that scenario occurred, we would know through a database on who got special permits and where those chickens would be at, and we could contact those, or are we going to rely on the media, uh, to get that message out that this is going on, Asian flu or whatever? How are we going to do that?
I'm not sure. I mean, we, we, we would have a database.
Yep.
How, how that database could be used or how useful it would be, I'm not real sure.
But it'd be reasonably close. If they got a permit, we would know roughly where.
Yes, they should have a permit to have, you know, six chickens, basically, so, or some, you know, so we should know, long as they're staying compliant with, as it was permitted.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do you need any more information from Council, Eric, to finalize what you're doing there or not? I mean, you feel there's more discussion needed in regards to this?
No. Okay. I think, I think Planning and Zoning did their job through Eric and others. I think there's, it's a good start, anyway.
Well, here again, it's primarily wards 1, 2, 3, and 4 that's going to be affected by this, so.
Yeah. And I, I know the ag parts dealt with in Ward 1, uh, because I did have some calls on that from the original. There was some questions, and Planning and Zoning and Eric worked through that, so.
Okay. Are you going to run those, Mr. Morrissey's ideas by Planning and Zoning? Those are pretty significant changes.
They would, they would be pretty significant changes, so if there is a majority of the Council that thinks those are good changes, I think that's probably going to be the best approach, would be to take it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can review that further with legal, but.
Okay. Very good. All right, thanks, thanks, Eric. Um, the second ordinance is the sidewalk ordinance revision to City Code Section 7-1-6. Mr. Zellifer?
There was a, a Supreme Court case that came down in the Iowa Supreme Court a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and it concerns adding one sentence to our present sidewalk ordinance. As you know right now, individual citizens or abutting property owners are responsible for the right-of-way and the sidewalk, not just shoveling and removing ice, but also maintaining it for safety purposes, and anything between the street and, uh, the, you know, the end of the sidewalk, the edge of your property, that's called right-of-way. And the abutting property owner is responsible for that. What this adding of one sentence to this will do will expressly make the abutting property owner liable for failing to maintain it. This all stems from a case in Iowa City where a woman was riding her bicycle along the University of Iowa sidewalk. And the sidewalk apparently had a defect in it, she fell and injured herself, and sued the city of Iowa City. The city of Iowa City said, "Wait a minute, the abutting property owner is University of Iowa, AKA the state of Iowa," so they tried to add them as a defendant. When this went to the Iowa Supreme Court, and it was determined that they did have that extra sentence in their ordinance, which gave liability, or at least joint liability, to, uh, the University of Iowa, or the abutting property owner, as the case may be, and they were allowed to do it. So, what we're doing, what I'm asking you all to do, is to follow in line with all the other municipalities around the city that are now adding this one sentence to their ordinance to authorize, uh, to the abutting property owner, and to put them on notice that if they don't maintain the sidewalk and the right-of-way, they may be held liable for the injuries to a, a third party. And the Supreme Court asked us to do this, or our attorneys, our, our defense attorneys with the insurance company asked us to do this, so that's why I'm here. Any questions? I'm available.
Questions, anyone?
Mr. Chairman? This is Ellafer. So, right now, we have zone rotation repairs, and in reference to, you know, this language going in there, if one sidewalk is, uh, getting bad in spots, um, yet their zone isn't up for a couple of years on the repair, um, what are they supposed to do at that point in time, the abutting property owner?
Well, that is an interesting question. By law, they have to keep it maintained regardless of whether or not their zone is up for, you know, up for redoing this year, you know? Maybe zone five in three or four years from now, but if their sidewalk is crumbling and somebody gets hurt, uh, there's, and, and there's notice of it, people know about it, uh, yeah, they can be liable. The city can be liable. Right now, they wouldn't.
So, so this wouldn't just apply to snow, ice, and weed?
No, this is a whole shebang, yeah.
The whole.
Entire right-of-way.
And, and do you know if all municipalities charge the abutting property owners for the sidewalk repair in the right-of-way?
No, I haven't researched that. I assume they do. It would be a pretty mammoth expense otherwise.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you ride your bicycle on the sidewalk in Waterloo?
In some areas, yes. You cannot in downtown, but in residential areas, you can. It is a bit confusing for the bicycle riders.
They're confused, anyway.
They are confused, anyway?
We're not getting on that.
Do we want to have a debate about that, Councilman Lenz?
Never mind. Uh, anyone else? Nothing. I guess that's it, Dave. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion to second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
All the meeting of the boards and commission committee to order. Kelly, if you would please do the roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
If someone would please.
I would move approval of the agenda as proposed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, if someone would please take number one.
I would take that if it's okay. Motion to receive and file Mayor Hart's recommendation of following appointments of Charles Niedham to the boards and commissions of the airport board. Expiration date is 6/30/2021, and this is a new appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any discussion on the motion at all? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion has been approved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in adjournment, thank you. Let's call our finance committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the agenda and the minutes of June 12th, 2017, as proposed.
Second.
Motion, a second on the agenda and minutes, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, then motion passes. Under new business, we only have one travel request today.
Mr. Chairman, we have a travel request for Matt Chessmore, John Martin, Mark Bosin, to attend the code inspection for healthier homes in Iowa City, Iowa, July 20th, amount not to exceed $430.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this travel request. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Pre-auths?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take those for pre-authorization to expend over $1,000. Cultural and arts amount estimated shipping handling of $2,088, and this expenditure is for 72 printed laminated core plast panels for building A, building exhibits, and activity for the Phelps Youth Pavilion. These are services, the amount estimated shipping handling of $15,000. Expenditure, amusement park tickets sold June through August 2017 fiscal year 2018. These are services, the amount estimated shipping and handling NTE $500. Expenditures, snacks that are part of the program such as River Hill's summer day camps and Elk Youth Golf Classics. These are services, the amount estimated shipping handling of $12,000, and this expenditure is rental of a portion of the maintenance building space at 304 West Fifth Street for fiscal year 2018. These are services, the amount estimated shipping handling $1,075. Expenditure, 64 4-inch by 6-inch by 12 feet pressure-treated timbers to replace damaged timbers at playgrounds. These are services, again, the amount estimated shipping handling $1,579.98, and this expenditure is for two 45-gallon flammable safety cabinets. These are services as well, amount estimated shipping handling of $3,250. This expenditure is software subscription for technical support for our membership, registration of facility, rental software fiscal year 2017. MIS, amount estimated shipping handling of $18,192. Expenditure, three-year maintenance renewal on the city phone system. Safety committee, amount estimated shipping handling of $2,398 plus $24 for shipping and handling. The expenditure of an AED's automatic external defibrillators units for waste management and young arena fiscal year 2017. Sewer department, amount estimated shipping handling of $9,500. Expenditure, 2015 deer XUV 8251 PSG and Y, stock number 248280, which is a Gator. Street department, estimate, amount estimated $20,000. That expenditure for a new 2013 Target concrete saw, 48 horsepower Yammer Yanmar diesel engine, 26-inch with three-speed transmission. Traffic operations, amount estimated of $837.50 plus $184.25 shipping and handling expenditures for 25 orange and white traffic channelizers with HIP, high-intensity precision sheeting, and 25 black 10-pound bases. Traffic operations, that amount is estimated of $6,100, and that expenditure is for one controller MMU manufacturing malfunction management unit BIU, which is a bus interface unit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on all the pre-auths. Any questions on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, if we get an overview on the, on the two sewer department expenses.
Steve?
Steve Holmbricker, Waste Management Services Director. I see the one on here, we're talking about the Gator, I see that one, I think you're, that one in particular?
Yeah, I guess just that one, yep.
Okay. Well, essentially, as we've analyzed our vehicular needs, we've taken a look and feel the best vehicle that we can replace. One of the pickup trucks that's being utilized at the wastewater treatment plant is to get a Gator that can be used to run around the plant, then it's also available to help us when we come to flood duties to look at the gate valves and all the stuff we have to do on the dykes. And we aren't getting a new one, we're getting a used one. We took a look at various websites and found one nearby and feel this one will meet our needs.
Now, we have a trade-in for this vehicle?
We do have, we are trading in old Gator units that have not been used for some time.
And is there a reason we're not using those?
That was all, you know, ahead of my time. I know they've been sitting and weren't used. We have been working with the staff, and they felt they had various issues. One of the issues that wasn't there is that during the winter operation months, they didn't have a cab, so they wouldn't, they weren't being used. So this one does have a cab, and we feel it's a right fit for our vehicular needs at the plant, and minimize the amount of fuel and everything we use versus having a pickup truck available just to run around our plant.
Okay. And then if I could have the street department talk about the saw purchase?
Sandy Greco, Interpolic Works Director. That's to replace an old concrete saw that we had that, while we were cutting up concrete on Ainsborough Avenue two weeks ago, it blew an engine, and it was approximately 12 to 14 years old. And so we checked around to see what we could afford, and this one happens to be a brand-new 20,000, or 2013, that has never been used. And it came in at a better price than some of the new ones are like anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000, so.
So I guess my question really is, do we use the, how often would we use this saw?
We use it for street repairs during the summertime quite a bit. I mean, not just for when there's an expansion joint or something, but anytime there's work to be done from possibly a contractor that came in that just puts, yeah, asphalt down, that sometimes we go in, cut all that up, and put concrete down, so we do use them quite a bit.
Is there any option of renting a saw instead of purchasing a saw for the city?
And we have rented one twice now for another work done on Ainsborough, and it's over $200 a day to rent it. This will also be used by traffic operations when we do cut in loops because we still cut in loops, so.
Okay.
So it's going to be used by more than just the street department.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, then motion passes. The bills payment this week? That's four, comma, 184, comma, 123.23.
Second.
Motion, a second on bills payment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, bills paid.
Chairman, a move for adjournment?
Second.
Motion, a second on adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Sorry for the short delay. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
All right, thank you. We will have a moment of silence today. Mr. Morrissey has a guest that has not made it, so we'll try to get that rescheduled for next week. So if you would all please join me, you can stand or you sit, it's your choice, for a moment of silence. All right, thank you. This evening's pledge will be led by City Attorney David Zellhoffer. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the minutes of June 12th, 2017, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda and minutes. Now, we have oral presentations, it's your opportunity to address the city council or matters, conversations. Please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and we're listening.
Jim Chapman, 2241 Burt. Mr. Mayor, you're not smiling. Dave Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. He did that to me once before, so. First off is that I did some calling around for rentals on that saw at $20,000, and this is on the consent agenda, so I'm bringing it up on oral. $200 a day, that's 100 days to recover. How many days do we actually use the saw per year? And then we have to maintain it, we have to replace the blade when it goes bad, et cetera. I talked to a couple different rental places, and they're around that $200 figure, and they take care of the maintenance, they take care of the blade replacement, et cetera. It doesn't seem to me like we should spend $20,000 to buy a cement saw that we, if we use it enough during the year, we have to use it, what, 100 days a year, do we? And on the consent agenda, A resolution, what is number three? To approve a lease agreement with Cedar Valley for rent. Who is for rent, and what are we renting? For a dollar, for a term ending December 31st, 2027. And the third one is number four, residence approval preliminary plan, specification of former contracts, et cetera, data public hearing, manhole inspection. Can't we do that ourselves? We have to hire an outside outfit to do that? Answers?
Just setting a data hearing, we'll talk about.
Well, that's that one, but how about the saw?
We will talk about it, so is that all you have for us?
And what are we leasing to Cedar Valley for rent LLC?
Uh, we will.
For $1 for 10 years?
We will.
Or a dollar a year even?
We will talk about that. Normally, we don't talk about agenda-related items, but we will talk about that in two weeks, it comes up for a public hearing.
Okay, I'll be here.
Me too. All right. Paul, is that your saw or blade or whatever? Whose is it?
Sandy.
Sandy's.
We don't normally do that, but today, is that, we use that more than 100 days per year?
Sandy Greco, Interpolic Works Director. I will check with the street department to see if we have records of exactly how much we used it last summer, and how much this summer so far.
So, does it last more than one year, is it done per year? How does that, how does that work?
Whatever repairs we need to make on concrete, we use it, so.
So it's consistently used?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
But I will check and see if we have a record of exactly how many times we used it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Jim Chapman, 224Burt. Say, I think it was Thursday, I was down on East and down by the other area where we used to dump the branches and the leaves and that, and after I got done there, I drove up to waste management, thought, well, I'll go up there and take a look around, and the gate was locked. And I guess all the years I've been down there and all the years I've been here, I guess I've never seen that gate locked. Is there a reason why we're locking that gate? An employee was coming out, guy went out, and I stopped him and asked him, and he said he didn't know why it was locked, so.
All right. Mr. Holmbricker, gate locked, not letting people in, or do you have to notify when you want to get in, or?
The gate, you know, has been locked ever since about a week ago, so ago. I, I mean, it's, it's, we did, if you want me to.
So how do people get in?
If people want to get in, they can buzz the gate. There is a, you buzz it, let us know that you're there, and we'll let you in.
All right. So just buzz it, they'll let you in, the need be?
Correct.
All right.
So I know there's been other reports it was on lockdown, that's not the case, people can get in, but, but we have, for security purposes, placed the gate in close, closed formation.
But people, if somebody buzzes or does what they need to do, they can get in there?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I got one more question. I guess since your trip to Washington, I guess I'd like to know, or if you're going to write a report, how, how we benefited from your trip to City of Waterloo. Have we gained anything from the feds, or what? Are we getting grants, any money, or anything from your trip, or?
If we found that out within 72 hours, that'd be good, but we, I will, I will, I will put something together about what, what we did do. You may be excited to know about it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Forrest Diliboo, 1725 Huntington Road. At the finance meeting, they talked about leisure services, about renting a building, and it's not on tonight's agenda. Do we know what week that will be on the agenda to rent the building on Fifth Street?
Does anyone know that?
Paul Hitting, Leisure Services Director. It won't be on a council agenda, it's on finance, that's the way we've done it in the past, so.
So which week do we know today?
It was on today.
Oh, it's on today?
It was approved unanimously.
So can I speak to it?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to be a little adventurous today.
Okay.
I can't say what happened tomorrow, but.
Okay, thank you. This building on Fifth Street, we've been renting this for years for $12,000 a year. This building did not have a permit taken out to enclose the outside area. It was done with materials which I call Oriental Strand Board and painted without a building permit. I do not think the city should be in the business of renting buildings that did not have permits to enclose them, and I think we can go a half a mile down the road to the old garage that housed city vehicles, that has a gas-powered generator behind it in case anything ever goes wrong here in the City of Waterloo, we lose electricity, we would have that building and that generator as a standby. We could work on vehicles, we could fill sandbags, we could do anything in that building because it has that generator. That is a wonderful building, it's only a half a mile from where this is, we would save that $12,000. It may not be as luxurious, it may not be heated, air-conditioned with curtains in the windows, like this building is. And Jim brought up areas closed up in the city at the end of Falls Avenue where we recycle the wood. It's a wonderful area, it's been wonderful, it is closed today and locked. Just brought that to my mind about why are we locking that up? It's, it's a wonderful area, and it does a wonderful thing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
Preston Duncan has shown up, and I would ask the council members if they would allow Mr. Duncan, Preston Duncan, the courtesy of addressing the chamber now with his invocation, as long as he's driven this far, and due to some circumstances, a little late.
It's fine with me.
All right, so it is still oral presentation, so Mr. Duncan, if you would please step up to the podium, you want to explain a little bit?
Well, this, this was.
Do you guess where your guess is from?
This was my month to ask somebody to be here, and with the help of Professor Catherine Zeeman, was able to get Preston Duncan, who is the tribal and spiritual leader of the Meskwaki Nation, to come here tonight for the invocation. So, Mr. Preston Duncan.
I'm from the settlement, Meskwaki settlement, near, between Tama and Montour, Iowa. I come from the. I come from the Montour section. The Miskinaki language is the same thing called Agonquin, that's our language, and that's the language I grew up speaking. And I have to speak in my own dialect for everyone here. And maybe one of these days, you might be able to get a translator to translate what I say. So, I'll start now. Hi, Kinoaman. Kshamane tu, kchimane tu, nakhachei Kinoamanee. Masakamikihkoe, nakhachei Kinoamanee. Wabunoeiak, wabunemiyak, inokeaneh, mamaatubenakoe. Ikaski. Anemkekeentamaakmanipemihayaakeen, mahakima. Akashiaajmanee, mamaatumuaanee, mamaatutamaamak. Inokeaneh, maat, nataasmanimanee, neeseemeenpematsien, wisksisen, wiskaisien, wiskataakan, wiskataakan, wiskatsien, wiskatsien. Inehentamaaekman, esakataamuaak, eskataamuaaj. Nakhacheegimanee. Vikiipaneskakoyaakman, hinapinagan, nakhacheegman. Ahkuma tamuen, nakhacheegmanee. Ahkateke, vikiipaneskakoyaak. Maneeke, tashi, taneshiaajmahake. Eki akaba, akabadamaaajmanee, ispemipemisiatuaajman, huiyawa. Wenemkenek, inesmaatubenakoe, Kinoamaneh, oneetuiyekoe. Nidchiskohemenanake, vipakaskayuttebakkoyaach. Enetai, pietaakeyaach, ahkateke, wineapskakoyaach, winoameko. Winoameko, vikiikaskitulaach, inesmaatubenakoe. Nidchiskohemenanak. Kapootimanee, miikan, vikaskenemke. Wennekeentamaaach, vipakaskitebakkoyaach, vipakinaaskitebakkoyaach. Eki kiyasiyaajmanee, kivamanihajaajmanee, usamakasimua. Kinoajahinokeemanee, inesmaatubenakoe. Vipakaskiteheyaach, nidchiskohemenanak, nidchiskohemenanak, inesmaatubenakoe. Ninaman kshamanea, kikitamaagmasenia, inesmaatubenakoe. Eekiemanee. Ahkumatakika yu. Wenemneeseaach, ekieman. Nakhacheegman, kevaxkhasachek. Kapootimanee, vikaskamuaach, vikaskamuaakutiaach, man, winoamanee. Chakeena, chakeenaatoatayu, nemasachek. Kinoajahinokeemanee, inesmaatubenakoe. Ninaman kshamanea, kikitamaagmasenia, inesmaatubenakoe. Kinoamaneh, oneetuiyekoe. Ineh, chakeena, komenakoe. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I also hear that you're going to be joining us for the entire city council meeting tonight.
No.
All right, is there anyone else? Mr. Sherba.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. As we're entering our, I guess, well, end of the year financial statements and stuff, I want to thank Sandy and the crew for this, the street department building. We had a chance to, Randy and I went, walked through together with one of the city leaders, or, I mean, one of the crew leaders, and was very impressed by the operation. We have an extreme amount of vehicles down there that are very old. We have very short staff. Being an auto mechanic for several years, I counted, I believe, six, and they told me that two are off on medical, one very serious, and possibility I have the same thing that he did, and I know how, what it did to me, so we're going to be short. Maintenance is a very important area, and our, as we've stated here, I know you're, you know, you've never heard me ever get up here and say, we've got to spend the money, but we have to think about what's coming up. And I think we need to reinforce our crew with this many vehicles, and, and the age of all the things that are sitting in there, a lot of them, we need to probably consider, maybe if we need a committee, or what we need to do, but we're going to be short on help. And, and I know, you know, that's a bad subject sometimes, but it's something we need to look at. Maintenance is important, because then we don't have to spend money for new stuff, and, and they're doing a super job. I mean, that, that place down there is very well organized, and, and something the city should be proud of. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. I think it was last week, while you and Noel were gone, that question was brought up about the 657A policy, and we all got copies of that, and I guess I'd have a question for Noel, there seemed to be some confusion about how it works, and the ability for a potential buyer to get some rebates from the city if they are successful, and they get the property in a rehabitable, inhabitable, I'm sorry, situation, and some of the staff who are here were not completely sure of that. So, is this document, is this at the counter? So if somebody that has no idea how this works come up to the counter, they'll get complete information?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We can definitely put it up at the counter, as a form to have up there. It is a form we pass out with, with the request for bids on these properties, and make available as part of the development agreement that would occur when the property is conveyed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, received and file oral comments?
Second. Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oral comments received.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's 1A through B4, and within that, of the bills payment, bills payment this week are $4,184,134.23. It's 4,184,134.23.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
Items 1A, 6 through 12. I'm thinking rather than me asking that we consider those separately, could somebody go down each one and give us the executive summary for what we're doing in each thing? You know, I get the sewer line, I get that, but give us a quick summary of what, you know, for, for instance, the $50,000 for economic development marketing. Kind of tell us what we're doing.
High-level review, and what those things, Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Would you like me to start with 6, and then go through?
Please.
Number 6, it's 1.475 in Northeast Industrial Park, so we are using the TIF proceeds in that area for the development of land in preparation for industrial lot development. We have 50 acres that we are, we provided water and sewer too, now we're doing some grading, and we'll be looking to do some road construction, applying for RISE funds, probably in the next year to year and a half, to go ahead and create some more lots for industrial development out there. We don't, we currently do not have any more lots out there larger than two acres, so to have some larger projects that we have interest for, this would get us some land out there ready for development. Number 7 is $100,000 in San Marlin for the San Marlin Road Lane Reconfiguration Project as a part of the VGM expansion. I think it was an $18 million expansion for them in terms of their investment, to add 250 to 300 employees. We did some road lane reconfigurations out there to get rid of some excess property, and to change some things on the road out there.
Is that, I thought that was done? That striping, it's all done?
This is the payments for that.
Oh, gotcha.
Number 8 is $700,000 in the East Waterloo Unified District for the Wagner Road Sanitary Sewer Extension. Again, we're creating some lots up there that, on some land that we acquired, to create some lots up there for industrial development. We'll have some development agreements coming through on those fairly quickly, as we've had great interest in the area. 1.5 million is number 9, in the Midport Levercy Road area. As you may recall, we've hired Clap Saddle Garber and Via Rail to work with us. We have a project that we're working with specifically to start it off with, but we're creating a industrial rail park there, on some land owned by the city. There's an initial, initial 70 acres, and we also own another 240 acres to the north. So we're creating a rail-served industrial park in that area, working with airport officials to lay that out as to how the rail would best work for additional rail-served projects. Number 10 is $160,000 in the downtown area for Bread to Beer for the Single Speed Brewery Project. As you may recall, as a part of that development agreement, the city is making some public improvements in that area to sidewalk, to the road, and to some other parking lot improvements and all that, to really recreate that area. We'll also be working in the near future to redevelop some other areas on Cedar Street and the parking lot for the Waterloo Center for the Arts, to add about another 100 parking spaces in that area.
But this is a grant, that's money directly to them, isn't it?
This is the money to them, as a part of the development agreement, to pay for some of the public infrastructure to get to their, to their private site. So it's a little different than a standard project in terms of how it was laid out being under built, lot line to lot line in the downtown area, whereas normally, we would provide the mains to a private site. Here, you are pretty much providing them right to the site. Number 11 is $60,000 in East Waterloo for the funds of the KWWL Property Acquisition Project. Again, as a part of that project, we, we acquired some properties out there, one of the lots across the street. We're now reselling that to the church as a part of their investment to that area, but this is the funds to go ahead and pay for that, that acquisition. Number 12 is $50,000 for the Unified Tax Inclement Finance District for Economic Development Marketing. This is the payment to Buxton for the year, and working with them in terms of the marketing and data gathering for new businesses to the area.
Noel, are we going to have some type of presentation by then, within the next couple of months?
By Buxton, yes. We're setting it up right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Somebody take 2, 3, and 4, please. Yes, sir. Item number 2 is adopting a resolution authorizing the city clerk to certify against certain parcels, unpaid weed mowing, snow removal, and property cleanups. Item 3 is adopting a resolution authorizing the city clerk to certify against certain parcels for unpaid commercial inspection fees and rental property inspection fees. And item number 4 is adopting a resolution approving permanent closure to the vehicular traffic of the 3800 block of West Shawless Road with placement of signage and permanent barriers.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to note that, in reference to number 2, the total amount that is involved there is $84,406. And in looking through those, page after page, there's, I mean, I'm not 100% sure that this is right on to the, to the number, but it's 383 properties. And out of those properties, 121 of those are owned by somebody who lives out of state, not even within the state of Iowa. And then another 81 are outside the City of Waterloo, but living in Iowa. And then we got eight of those that really don't have any mailing address at all. And I'd also like to note that there's a couple of those in there. One of those assessments is over $9,000, and another one is over $2,000. And I don't know how that gets that way, but, I mean, when you've got approximately going on, or approaching two-thirds, or at least 60% of those properties being outside of Waterloo, with about a third of them being out of state, something, to me, got to change. I don't know what it is, but maybe some research needs to be done with other municipalities on what they do when we have this many properties bought by out-of-state people who then don't take care of the properties. And with number 4, I just had a question, I mean, what does it mean that there, there's going to be a permanent closure to vehicular traffic? And also, would that not just mean that the people that are going to dump the stuff just is going to go out a little bit farther and dump it?
Paul.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. This essentially is a road that dead-ends at Blackhawk Creek. The problems that you're referring to, the dumping, were brought to our staff's attention by John Miller, and John's here tonight, John is a neighbor near this property, and I'd invite John, if you would, to just kind of describe the problem and how you think this will help. Thank you, John. Been a long time, I was usually on the other side of this microphone, rather than on this side.
You're in the hot seat now.
I live at 4213 West Shawless Road, and Shawless Road dead-ends at the...
What's your name, sir?
Pardon?
What's your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, John Miller. And that's not an alias. And it's in Hudson, the address is Cedar Falls, but my residence is in Hudson. And Blackhawk County is responsible for maintaining the green belt from Shawless Road to Hudson, and Waterloo is responsible, if I'm not mistaken, Paul, from Shawless Road, there's some little jigs and jags in there. And what's happening, since I've lived there for 17 years, and, you know, being old, you have to get up in the middle of the night to do some bodily functions, and I see lights coming in and out of those places at 2:00 and 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, when Paul has a, a sign that says, "It's closed, the park is closed." I know that people are down there doing things that probably he shouldn't be doing. And so, I've talked with the Blackhawk County Conservation Board, I think they made a recommendation that we, we do it, we've been down there, the neighbor who owns the property has cattle down there. If we put a restriction on the, on the road, right at his, at his gate, so that people cannot get down in there, there's plenty of parking, so people can stop and walk if they need to, they can turn around in Lee Miller's driveway and come back. But I've picked up at least, I don't know, four or five garbage bags full of trash, I walked down there this morning, and after the weekend, there's usually another sack full of trash down there. And it would, according to Mike Hendrickson, from the Conservation Board, and working with Paul, if we close that, so that it cannot have access down there, and that doesn't mean just putting a gate across the road, because the four-wheelers go down there in the ditch and will go around it. So we worked with Paul to close the whole thing, and people can still walk in, and fish, and walk in the green belt, so. I don't like doing that, I stepped it off this morning, I think it's about 300 yards, Paul, I don't know from the map, I think it's about 300 yards down there to do that. And it will save an off, I have to tell you that the neighbors are anxious about what's happening down there. We've had some folks run into the, to the creek, and then come back up and stop, and want some help to be pulled out. We have folks down there, a couple of years ago, I, I know they were cooking meth because I could smell it, but the dog, the dog was so much bigger than I was that I turned around and left. And the other thing is that the Hudson Police take care of that. But he comes down there early in the morning, about 7:00, and about 3:00 in the afternoon, and at 2, at 2:00 in the morning is when the problem is. So I would encourage you to, to work with, let us work with Paul to close that off.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments about this, council, any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right, those items carry, 5 and 6, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of an application to Blackhawk County Gaming Association in the amount of $65,000 for lighting replacement at Riverfront Sports Park Diamond Number 2, bleacher replacement and sidewalk connections from parking areas at Danes and Tibbetts Baseball Complex. And I move to adopt a resolution approving completion of project, recommendation of acceptance And I move to adopt a resolution approving completion of project, recommendation of acceptance of work, and release of retainage in the amount of $83,514.96 for work performed by WRH Inc. of Amana, Iowa at a total cost of $1,670,299.12 for the fiscal year 2014 Belt Filter Press Edition, City Contract Number 869.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk, oh, Mr.?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fore Street. On number five, what is our match from the city to get $65,000 for the lighting replacement?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Typically, it's a 50% match for gaming, and that would be matched by a couple of different sources. Build Our Ballpark has been a partner for a long time in improving our ball diamonds, so they've stepped up for a portion of it, and the city would cover the rest of that with bond money if the application is successful.
With bond money. I heard that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Seven and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving agreement with Regions Bank to have public right-of-way located at 412 Mulberry Street for beautification purposes. Number eight is a resolution approving supplemental agreement, number one, with ACOM Technical Services, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $27,500 in conjunction with fiscal year 2017 flood control gate well repairs, contract number 918, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
All right. Those items carry. Number nine by itself, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving contract with Cedar Bend Humane Society for the boarding of domestic animals and injured/sick wildlife taken into the Humane Society by animal control officers and Waterloo residents, commenced in July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Questions?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fore Street. I'd like to have a figure on how much we pay for animal control through the city, including vehicles and manpower, and how much we are spending with Cedar Bend Humane Society to board the animals that we don't take care of like we originally started to do.
Say that again.
How much are we spending on animal control, including Black Hawk Humane Society, in a nutshell?
Total budget. The total budget.
Total budget, including Black Hawk Humane Society, and I guess compared to what we used to spend when we had just Black Hawk Humane Society doing, and what their price might be today.
We, if I'm not mistaken, we have the same agreement we had three years ago, right? Or something there except they do weekends or offer extra hours if you want to step up in.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. Before we took animal control back with the city, the Humane Society provided enforcement Monday through Friday from, I believe it was 8:00 to 5:00. They stopped weekends and they stopped nights, so that's when we took it back. We have 24-hour coverage. After next week, I can give you what our costs were for the fiscal year because we'll have paid Humane Society. I did get an email from the Humane Society today that said, "At this point, we are not entertaining..." It keeps moving, just a minute. "At this point, we are not entertaining the thought of doing enforcement and really don't have anything to discuss regarding the enforcement topic." So they're not, they do not want to get back into the enforcement again. We have a really good working relationship with them right now, and we do the enforcement for Waterloo and Cedar Falls.
Okay. Understand that. But then this figure you'll get me, Mr. Mayor, she'll get me, is our total cost for our vehicles, our enforcement people, and Black Hawk Humane Society's cost.
Right. It would be our total budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, if you'd stay up there for just a minute. You know, the media basically just said we're renewing the contract for basically the same thing as what we had this year, and the rate's going up $4,800. Could you talk about that just a little bit so the folks at home that don't get the information we do?
Sure. Okay. What it is, is that right now we pay $48 per animal that's taken in for a three-day holding period. After three days, the Humane Society takes possession of the animals. Last, for the last 12 months, between the animal control officers and the citizens of Waterloo, they've taken in 1,338 animals. Some were litters, so we didn't get charged quite as much for that. So as of July 1, the cost will be going up to $51 per animal. In subsequent years, it'll go up 25 cents a day, which would mean in fiscal year 2019, it would be $51.75 and then 75 cents on top of that for 2019. So it's basically the same contract, it's just the cost of boarding has gone up.
And it seems like in the last year or so, we've had a lot less pit bull incidents. Is that an accurate assessment, or have I just been missing the news?
What I can say is we have more control over it than we did before. They're still out there, but we have just as many bites with other dogs as we do pits.
Thank you.
I mean, if you want the last year's bite reports, you know, we can let you know exactly how many bites have been.
I'd like to have that, we could, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Sandy, I think I figured $4,200 is the increase over three years, and isn't that, I believe that's about a 9.38% increase in the cost of right now. And the other thing is, this is what they're charging the city, but I think it also is in there that it's also what they would charge an individual if they would trap an animal or bring a stray cat or out there, isn't it? Isn't that the case?
If it's a Waterloo resident, the city pays for that cost along with the animal control. Cedar Falls, they also bill Cedar Falls per animal. They have a five-day holding period, but we only have a three-day one. They bill the city of Cedar Falls for animals that we take in or Cedar Falls citizens take in.
So say that somebody has a possum in their garage, and they need to get it out of there, and how much would that cost the city to...
Hopefully, they call us, we pick it up, take it. A lot of times, we take a lot of our wildlife to wildlife rehab now instead of taking it to the Humane Society to save.
But there would be a charge associated with that, or that would just be animal control and no other charge?
Right. That would just be animal.
But if it did end up at the Cedar Bend Humane Society, say it was a stray cat or some feral cats or some stray dogs, and they'd end up going to the Cedar Bend Humane Society?
Right. It would be a $48 charge per animal, and July 1, it'll go up to $51.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right. All right. Thank you. 10 and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Number 10 is a resolution approving federal aid agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation, project number STP-U-8155756, parentheses, dash 70, dash 07, to accept federal aid funds for conducting media, multimedia, children's traffic safety awareness campaign for the area covered by the Metropolitan Planning Organization in the amount of $30,000, including the city's share of $7,500, for a total project cost of $37,500, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second, and I think this came up last week. Sandy, you want to elaborate?
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. The first one with the federal aid, the total project grant that we applied for, that we went to the state for, was for $37,500. 80% of that, the state and federal awarded us, so that was $30,000. The 20% was $7,500. So I know it was really confusing last week, but that's the best way to explain it now. The total project is $37,500.
Okay. So that's our share.
Yes.
All right. All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sandy, you were going to send me the federal aid consultant selection documentation?
I emailed all that to you Friday.
Huh?
I emailed all that to you Friday.
Oh.
Okay.
Check it again, because I didn't get it.
Okay. Well, we, let's see if I can remember. We emailed out four to four different vendors. Hellman, the Four Seas, Terry Boots, and Delam, I can't remember the name. But anyway, we only got two replies, and that was Hellman and the Four Seas. So we had phone interviews, and since it was under 100, I believe it's 150,000, we do not have to go out with a selection committee. We can just select. So we had interviews, and we thought we would try Four Seas mainly because we worked with Hellman for 10 years, and we thought they could probably bring in some new ideas to us, so...
So you follow the federal aid consultant selection process?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I'll sign it.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Powers.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right. And I want to, to your point of privilege, Charles Needham in the audience today, he was appointed to our airport board as well. Was he here earlier?
He was. He had the leaf ringer on there.
Okay. Okay. My apologies on that. Got taken a little bit out of order, so I'll follow up with him tomorrow. Number 12, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number 12 is adopting a resolution approving the second of two payments for fiscal year 2017 to the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance for work towards economic development in the amount of $14,250 base amount with $10,000 in incentive funds for a total payment of $24,250.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
We got one here and then here, but first there.
Thank you, sir. David Dreyer, 3145 West Fore Street. I guess I'd like to see some sort of report on the economic development they've helped us do at a second payment of $24,250. Some sort of oversight on that as to how much they've benefited the city. Have they benefited the city, let's say, $48,250 so we can afford to pay them $24,250?
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Dreyer?
Not on that subject, sir.
All right. Noel, I think there was something added to our communication about some parts of it. Is that your saying? Or you want to wait? You want me to have him wait and you go first, or is it around this saying?
It might be, I don't know. It might be the same. Should I ask him a question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, Noel, and you know, I've asked this many times, and I get kind of irritated when they submit these bills, that we have no documentation of the number of jobs or the capital investments. I wish we could get that number, and maybe they didn't bring any jobs, I don't know. But I would think in two quarters, they could say to us, "We brought 10 jobs at John Deere and five at Titus Manufacturing." You know what I mean? I just wish we would get that. The other comment I may make is the 15.63 per hour, per job, that seems a little low to me. We may want to think about raising that bar. You know what I mean? Maybe $26 jobs or something in the future. Just a comment.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. This current, so just going with the contract that we have within this current request for payment is based on the agreement calls for an automatic payment of $14,250 just for doing some work. And then the other part of this current request is $5,000 per quarter for work in the solicitation of new companies, contacts with existing companies for expansion, inquiries from new companies, calls, contacts, leads, prospects, conferences, databases created and/or posted in efforts to network. And of course, that was the attachment that was in their letter. They talked about the 36 active projects from both external and existing businesses, 26 active external prospects that would consider the city of Waterloo, eight active existing business projects by Waterloo companies. An estimated 4,693 total jobs and $156.5 million total in capital investment have been identified as potential. So that is what the, and they talk a little bit about, they've also been actively marketing the available office space at Ocwen to several sources, three visits to Waterloo by three different companies, one international company for manufacturing, two domestic, one professional services, and one in oil recycling. 750 calls made to the 250 C-level executives to identify expansion plans and interest in Waterloo and the Cedar Valley from February 2017 to May 2017. And four companies expressed interest in the Cedar Valley at various stages of site selection resulting in initial conference calls and material follow-up. 24 consultant call trips to Chicago and Atlanta, 12 meetings with site selection consultants. One Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, along with the city of Waterloo staff, completed the final step towards certification of the South Waterloo Business Park as a shovel-ready site certification with the state. 268 temporary construction jobs are being created as a result of the Courtyard Marriott at the Tech Works Project. That is to be opened by fall of 2017. 1,200 square foot U&amp;I Metal Casting Center has expanded it, an additional 1,200 square foot in the north portion of Tech One. 600 square feet natural soy products have moved into 600 square feet of lab space on the third floor of Tech One. 8,000 square feet of preparation underway for a tenant on the third floor of Tech One. And one visit to Youngson Business Incubator trip resulted in future partnership to help Tech Works and U&amp;I investigate an advanced manufacturing incubator. So that's what they're requesting in payment now is based on those results. We can definitely work to try to get some more job numbers and all that, but they're not requesting any of the additional funds that they could request based on specific projects happening this last two quarters that resulted in the job creation. In terms of your question on the 15.63 per hour, I'll verify that. I believe that is what is considered a, that's one of the job categories with the State of Iowa categories, but I'll verify where that number came from.
So we're paying them per the contract for the prospecting for business?
Correct. Correct. There was nothing in here for anything specific to job creation like there was the last time. I think our last payment was $28,250, and there were some numbers in there. I believe it was for the hydrate expansion that specifically brought a certain number of jobs paying a certain amount per hour.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Noel, what is concerning to me about this is attaching a number to a generality. And like 36 active prospects projects, 26 active external prospects, I would like to know, and this is just for the incentives that we're talking about. I understand that other 12,000 or 14,000, whatever it is, 14,250, but that 10,000 is for incentives. And when it comes to that, I would like, and I think we all should have, names associated with, okay, so who are the 26? Who are the eight? You know, that, because I want to see if that's the same when the next six months comes up or the next quarter comes up. I believe that that kind of accounting is something that I'd like to see.
Let's talk about that because it's a very competitive market. So the same contacts we have is the same contacts that others may be able to acquire too. So we need to have some more conversation about what we can do to make sure that, I won't use the word integrity, but just make sure there's not duplication of businesses.
And that's, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly right. That's what I would want to make sure is not happening here. And that's all, man.
Mr. Mayor, just one follow-up question. Noel, it does say that they have estimated four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three total jobs. So you think that's fairly accurate, Noel?
It had been identified. So either some have come here or some of them are in prospects that we are working with right now that have been identified as potentially being here. We do have some large prospects out there that we're working with that could contain a good number of jobs.
So overall, what would be the chance of, what percent of that number would we realize for the city?
It's always, it's tough to estimate that. You know, as an example, I mean, there was a large project, obviously we chased it, we got second place for that, you know, had two hundred jobs. That still ends up being a zero now even though it was very, very close, so.
So I agree with Councilman Lynn. You know, there's a lot of activity and a lot of projects going on, but the bottom line is jobs, isn't it? And I think that's what we've asked for several times. So the taxpayers are paying out money for this program. We kind of want to know what the bottom line is, is job and good paying jobs as well, you know, low-wage jobs to our community. So I think that's kind of what we're looking for going forward.
And I know they gave out some handouts in their last quarterly presentation and I know that they're working to reorient those presentations specifically to have job numbers in there for their next one.
Could you have her resend whatever the information was that she submitted for that quarterly report?
Yes, sir.
If they can have that for those that weren't in attendance, but we need to have those copies. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wupper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All items carry. Thirteen and fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to adopt, I move to approve contract modification number one for an increase of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for the fiscal year 2017 street reconstruction program, contract number nine-two-one, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And I move to approve change order number two, resulting in an increase of forty-five hundred dollars to via rail engineering for additional survey work located near the northeast corner of Northeast Drive and Independence Avenue.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Eric, could you give us an update on the modification for thirteen and then Noel, the second one?
Hi, Eric Thorsten, City Engineer. Modification number one to our reconstruction project this year is for an additional about a block and a half of East Forest Street. We're reconstructing a lot of that this year. We were going to be doing this next year anyway. The bids we received this year were very favorable. And the other thing is the state appears to be moving ahead now with the next phase of the Highway sixty-three project. Bids are due tomorrow and so we'd like to get this done this year. Once the state closes Highway sixty-three, we think there'll be a lot more traffic on East Fourth and if we had to close it next year for six or seven, eight weeks to reconstruct this, that would disrupt traffic pretty dramatically in that area. So we think it's good to move ahead with this. We were going to do it anyway and get it done this year and then we won't be in the way of any detours or additional traffic in that area next year.
All right. Thank you. Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. This is a change order for, we are actually working with a potential prospect out of the northeast industrial park area. The project has increased in size that could be coming here, so we're doing some additional survey work. The survey work will benefit us for the development of this land regardless of whether or not we get this project and help us for further plating of the area. So we think it's very beneficial to do it for this project and even if we did not get it, it would help us for development of the land in the future.
All right. Any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk?
Please, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?